Good evening, once again, everybody. Can we please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the midst of liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag, state of Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Sorry, Joan, I forgot to call the meeting to order at 6:01. Let me also silence my phone.
Moving on, we have under two, approval of agenda.
Roll call first.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call. Thank you.
Priscilla, Manoelito.
Present.
Kevin Mitchell.
Here.
Lynn Hitteman.
Here.
Sandra Jeff. Joe Menini.
Present.
Now, we're on to approval of agenda.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Hitteman.
We have before us some items that I believe should be taken care of this evening because I think there are people who came specifically for and in connection with these items. We also have, on missing from the agenda, I think, quite a number of items that were submitted for the agenda. I don't know why they're here, so I believe that what we really need to do is to schedule another meeting, at which time we can take up some of these items and the items that are missing. So what I would like to do is make a fairly specific motion regarding the approval of agenda as follows. That we do place on the agenda, approve on the agenda, the public comment, the reports. Item eight, B, travel, that I think has already actually happened, but I do have a question on that because we did not get in the packet information about who's paying for that. And then items H and I and J under eight, those are consent items, excuse me, and that the other, any other items be left until we can schedule another meeting, and I will not place in my motion a date, so we can consider that separately if the board approves my motion regarding the approval of minutes, and we have a separate one to agree on a date. I know that I submitted a number of items last Monday for the agenda, and I do believe that other board members may also have submitted items that did not get on the agenda that should not wait till after the new year, I believe. So that's my motion.
Madam President.
Mr. Menini.
Yes, I also have a referring question, referring back to our November 14th minutes. It was moved by myself to put on the agenda for today, the approval of the public school stadium, and it was voted on, all three voting members said yes, but it has, it has not been on the agenda yet. So it needs to be corrected. Since it wasn't on the agenda, I called and told my members not to attend to have that meeting, committee meeting.
Yes, Mr. Jeff. Thank you. Yes, I too had some items that I wanted on the agenda, but I didn't see that on the agenda, Madam Chair, and I also like to make a motion to also have this special meeting in my district out in Segi. Thank you.
Point of order, Madam Chairman. You can only have one motion at a time on the.
Yes. Okay, then I'll. There's a motion on the floor, board members to, let me repeat this, Mr. Hitteman, to my understanding, you would still like to have on the agenda this evening, public comment, reports eight under new business, B, H, I, J. Is that correct, sir? There's a motion on the floor. Any other comment?
Madam President.
Yes.
As the motion stands, I can't support. Definitely needs your financial business, succeed D and E. That's your, your financial business. I will speak, Mr. Menini, yours was an error for being left off. Ms. Jeff, I thought we had everything of yours on there. Mr. Hitteman's, the three reports you asked for, at the last meeting, I told you we were going to be working diligently on the evaluation, and that we wouldn't have time to do that many reports, and everybody agreed, and I think that's why Ms. Manoelito and I never put them on there at the time. Need to run the district, but at the same time, I need to do the reports and such for you all, and it's getting to the point where the two cannot exist together.
There is a motion.
Madam President, regarding the three, I think what's referred to as six C, D, and E are items on the consent agenda, financial, I don't know exactly what happens with those in terms of timing, in terms of when not being able to do the transfer holds up things that can't wait a week, but I will, with the group's approval, I'll adjust my motion to include C, D, and E as consent items, make sure they're covered for the business office.
Board members, I just want to make some clarification on the agenda items. When we, when, when I do email, or if there's things that I have to do, I try very hard to email or text superintendent to tell him, you know, I have to wait until Thursday to send in the agenda topics or to review them. The thing that I would really like, and I think that needs to change, is that we do not see the, the agenda again until it's brought to our, until we put on here, or before Joan gives us a, that it has been posted. I think there's prior approval that needs to happen on this. I think when we do send in our comments or our agenda topics, we just assume that those will be placed on there. I know, Mr. Hitteman, you had additional comments on the items that you wanted on the agenda, and I think that needs to be respected. And Mrs. Jeff, I don't know what's missing on yours, but Mr. Hitteman, Mr. Menini, I know that we did say, yes, we were going to put this, your agenda item on the next agenda, and, but I do agree with Mr. Hitteman also. So I will go ahead and, if there's no other further question, I'm going to ask for roll call.
Madam Chair, before we get to the, the action, I do have, I do need some clarification from the superintendent regarding item eight, eight B. My, my question on this, Superintendent, is you have on here for Meremaya High School, 15 students, two chaperones, you know, two phoenixes. I'm kind of concerned because what about the other schools, you know, such as the rural communities?
Ms. Jeff, I think we need to approve the agenda, and then when we get down to the approval of consent items, that can be the time we ask our questions.
Okay.
Okay. So roll call on Mr. Hitteman's motion, please.
Madam President, would you repeat the motion?
Yes. Mr. Hitteman motioned to have public comment placed on the agenda, the reports under eight new business, oh, I'm sorry, under six financial section, C, D, E, under eight new business, B, H, I, and J.
I'm really confused. Are we going to vote on those as a consent agenda items that you suggested?
When, yes, when we get down to that motion, sir, or that item on the agenda under consent agenda, we will.
I still don't understand his motion, but okay.
Madam, may I?
Yes.
Clarify a little bit. This is still the item to approve the agenda, and so these are the items that I'm saying I move to approve, to include on the agenda this evening, ones that I think need to be dealt with in a timely fashion, or because people are here to address them or be involved in them, and the other items then are simply omitted, they would be taken up at a subsequent meeting if they're, again, placed on the agenda then. So in other words, there will be no executive session, there will be any other consent items, while there are some of those, there's none. And that omits then our board reports, it omits our notices and communications, omits number seven, legal services, because I think we need to get our act together, our understandings together, what the agenda was, was to consist of, and we can, I think, put that back together, pull it back together in another meeting. My side com, I actually had thoughts about, let's just reschedule the meeting and get the other items back on the agenda, but I think that would be unfair to people who, who have come for specific reasons this evening.
Priscilla. I'm confused. He's saying for the minutes. Under reports, take off number three?
No, the only things on the agenda for this evening will be public comment, reports under six financial section, C, D, E, under eight, new business, B, H, I, J. Everything else can be referred to, deferred to the next board meeting that we schedule, which will probably be a special meeting.
And no executive session.
And no executive session.
With that, again, no further questions. I will entertain a roll call.
Mr. Menini.
I'm voting no because of the legal services of November 14th was postponed, and it needs to be action item, and should be responded to at this meeting.
Ms. Jeff?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manoelito?
Yes.
Madam President.
Yes.
I do think we need to schedule another meeting then, I would suggest, but I won't put it into a motion because I don't know people's schedules. At this point, I would suggest we look at a week from tonight, because Mondays are a common day of the week for our meetings. If someone else sees a better date.
Okay, we can look at our calendars while we're doing public comment. First one, we have Bobby Martin.
Good evening, board. Name's Bobby Martin, parent of students at Twin Lakes, Tohachi Mid, and Tohachi High School. My original intent tonight was first to bring about some positive, some positivity that's been happening in our, in our school, in our, our area, Tohachi area lately. The one is, publicly want to thank you, Kevin, for getting those lights set up at the high school. I think that's something that's been needed there for such a long time, but you can now, when you're coming up to the road to the games or something, you can actually see where the turnoff is to the high school, and does not pose that much of a danger anymore. So from our community, thank you, appreciate it, for the rest of the board that supported that as well. The other thing is, going back to our transportation issue, the last time this came up, I brought about, brought the, brought it to the attention of the board, that school buses were still not coming down our road. I then talked to Mr. Jeff Bond at that time and asked, is there any way we could get some other kind of transportation down those roads, because the buses are still packed? Most of the times, those buses won't even come down the road, and when they do, again, our children are literally sitting on each other's laps and are sitting in the stairwells of the buses. Since that last conversation, I was told that it was illegal for them to use SUVs or buses or any other sort of transportation to come down and pick our kids up, to take them to school, or to bring them home. I'm confused now, because we do have an SUV, two SUVs actually coming down our, our roads, bringing our kids home and picking them up in the morning. I'm glad that something's finally been done, but I'm confused. Why was I told that it was illegal for that to happen, and that the district could lose all its funding for transportation if that were to happen, but yet it's happening now? It seems to me if that can be made, that kind of decision can be made, that other decisions could be made, better buses could be sent down to pick up our kids, because I'm sick and tired of our kids having to squeeze into these small buses and SUVs. I'm glad the SUVs are coming down our road. I still wish our, our elementary students were being brought home instead of taken to a, a bridge to be dropped off. So I guess that's twofold. So I just, again, want to say thank you for at least making something happen, whoever made that decision, but more decisions, better decisions need to be made on behalf of our children who are riding in those SUVs that are very small, very small, and my daughters are taller than I am, and I'd probably fit in the back of one of those pretty easily, but their, their legs are cramped. There's, I think maximum capacity should be eight person, or eight persons in that vehicle, there's more, like 15 or 16 in there. So we do have pictures, if we need to show them to somebody as proof, because we've had to take this matter into our own hands now. But please do something about the transportation for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Renee Hardy.
Good evening, board, parents, guests, staff. My name is Renee Hardy, and I am a parent out of Navajo, New Mexico, and I have a high school student, and I have nieces and nephews that attend the middle school, and I have a son and nephews and nieces again at the elementary. First of all, I'd like to thank you for listening to our concerns, because we would not get anywhere if we did not bring it here. I kid you not, we would not have answers, things would not get done unless we bring it here. I've had concerns at the last meeting, and I want to take the time to thank Paletta White. She took my phone call, I kind of gave her a little bit of information. It wasn't even a day that passed that both she and Rachel Rodriguez called me back and said, okay, this is what's going to happen, and it's a personal issue, so they took it from there. And I want to say thank you, because I don't see negative stuff. They can try to hide it, but eventually it'll come out again. But the other thing I'd like to bring up, there's a couple of different items that I have, so please bear with me. I wanted to know first if tribal clothing was offered at all schools in our district. Please don't frown upon it, because I work for a nonprofit organization in Winderock, and I have families that come in from Gallup that ask us if we have children's jackets, shoes, or even jeans for their kids to wear to school. And I asked if they filled out a form, and we try to give them what we have in our office, or we try to get them in contact with the different agencies locally near them, but a lot of times, they don't have what they are needing. So that's question one. And I left my agenda at the seat, and I was kind of bothered with this trip that Miami Mira High School was able to take. We were told last week that our basketball team could not go to Santa Fe end in for a tournament that was pre-scheduled. How do we get our schedules printed and agreed and passed? I don't know who goes through the budget, whether it's at our high school or if it's here. I've called, I've asked. First, they said we had no funding for lodging, for travel costs, and I said, how come there was no communication? We as parents, we can also help our kids get there, whether it's we all pitching for rooms, for food, it's not very much for some of us, but that's one question that I'd like answered. You know, why is it only, again, in-town students that are able to do certain things? We count, we're out, an hour out of here, and I'm going to bring up a program that I've talked about in the past, the UNM program. There's only one student from our high school that attends, one student. Yeah, we can get dual credit, we have that, but why haven't we offered other things for other students? That one student is my son, and I choose to transport him to and from every morning. And then the other thing is the no funds thing. I have gotten calls from parents, and parents are concerned, and I looked on the webpage before I got off of work today, and there's two postings that I'm kind of concerned about for our high school, and it was posted today. So I tried to call the school, no answer. I tried to call the individual who's actually filling those positions right now. One's a PE teacher, one's the AD slash coach slash, I don't remember what else was on that line, I have a printout. I left a message for this individual who's hired by our district. Come to find out, he didn't even know his position was posted. How do we do that? We're trying to hang on to teachers, but yet we go behind their backs to do stuff like this. We're supposed to support our staff, we're supposed to push them in the right direction for our students, not for anybody else's behalf. No communication, again. Somebody want to answer that? And I've asked about the trip, and it always comes back to our AD, but you know what? I don't think it's the AD. How can you have an AD when you don't really give him the position and the duties to be an AD? Yeah, he has a title, but he doesn't real, he's not able, or he's not given an opportunity to do something. He did great wonders with students. He was our coach. We didn't have very many coaches out there in the rural area. He offered to coach our cross-country team, and now he has no choice but to coach our middle school basketball team, because there's no coach, and I'm going to tell you why. We need to pay our coaches for the jobs that they were hired for. There's two coaches that hasn't got paid, and I don't think that's right, because I think we need them. They encourage these students to do good in school, they encourage them to have the GPA that is needed to play, and then not only that, they take the time out of their family schedule, their personal schedule, to do practices, and to be there with our students. So why aren't we paying these coaches what we hired them to do? I hear District was supposed to call one of them back, and then all they said is, oh, I was waiting for this schedule. That was a week ago, before Thanksgiving break. I think we need to really take a step back. Everybody here at District gets paid. What would you do if you didn't receive a paycheck here at District? What would you do? I don't think you'd come to Gallup every day, but these coaches, these individuals that have, take the time from their family, they come in because of the students. Think about it, and it's the holidays. How long is it going to take before we move somewhere? And then the other thing, I had a couple of staff member, I'd like this answered, maybe Paletta White or someone else could answer that, clocking in and out. Is it only for non-certified teachers that have to clock in, or is it for certified? Or is everybody supposed to do it? So thank you for letting me go over five minutes, but these are things that are happening in our community. Let's keep our coaches, let's keep our students, because they're doing good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Huh? Yes, she did. I'm sorry. Reynolds Morris.
Good evening, everybody. I just was given a note to read from a concerned parent, and this would be the school of Tohachi High School. I guess basically I'm just going to read what was written here. Okay, it says here, I feel, feel needs to be brought up and checked, checked into. I am, I am a NAC believer, and this employee by the name of Ortiz at Tohachi High School has, has some disrespectful and involving our, our children in her office behind closed door with peyote rattles, drums, and peyote bags. I do not want any retaliation against all my kids who attend school at the Tohachi Schools. And it says here, on Friday, December 2nd, it was known that Ortiz, one of the counselor, had children in her office, and they were exposing a ceremony use, using peyote stuff, like the peyote rattle, drum, and peyote bag. A child was even laying on the floor in front of her, in front of her, maybe he took some peyote. These kids should be in class with the teachers learning and not in a counselor's office trying to create cultural stuff. This is like a doctor practicing without, without a license to heal people. She has no business doing this stuff with our children. This is something for our Native American church, a religion which should not be made fun of. This is unethical and inappropriate practice. If parents should hear about what really goes on in the school, they, let's see, they will be very upset and trouble with, with will start. It is a shame that the principal do not do anything about this, no excuse, he can hear the drum and singing coming, going on. I will report to the Santa Fe Educational Department if this is not looked into. Concerned parent. Basically just reading this note here. This person didn't want to come forward, so that's, they was giving me, giving me this note, so.
Thank you very much. Andrea Thomas.
Andrea Thomas?
Good evening, school board members, Superintendent Chappetti, and parents and all that are here. Um, I have a couple issues here. Uh, the first one, I wanted to follow up on the Tohachi High School gymnasium. As far as, um, I had brought it up a couple meetings ago to look into, um, due to the ventilation and AC not working. I had brought it up to the principal and the AD director at Tohachi High School. I did follow up with them, um, last week, and I was told that a work order went in, but there was a lot of holes and cracks that they found on top of there, so, and I said, okay, so what's next? I mean, what's going to be done next? And there was no answer. They couldn't give me an answer. So, I'm standing here, bringing up the issue again, to see what you all can do to help look into this. It's been, I'm going to say, six years that, uh, that gymnasium has had no ventilation. And two years in a row, we had athletes go down because of the heat. Um, and I don't know, I don't know how we can, uh, request for an upgrade. Uh, the second one is, um, the continued stuff in Gallup Independent, about the stipends, about the attorney of the board, about, um, the board members themselves, et cetera. I mean, who's making all these recalls, you know? And where is it coming from? Um, I remember Senator Munoz has stated that something needs to happen, there's a new year coming. Um, either the board or superintendent has to go. There's no communication, no teamwork. And the only one positive thing that I did see, I mean, were, look at the sign up there, GMCS URO, great, uh, great job on school grades, you know? That was the only thing, but it's to the parents, to the teachers, to the principals at those high schools that make this happen. It wasn't, you, school board members, superintendent, you weren't at the schools, you're not in the classes, you're not tutoring, you know? I have, you know, what, what is it that we keep our teachers there? And that brings up the other issue, you know? These teachers, they were given a letter one day and taken out the same day to go home. How do you think our kids feel? With no explanation, they don't know what's going on, but yet, those are the teachers that made that happen. I don't know. This has been going on, it's been let go, I guess, for the past year, two years, and all of a sudden, they've been given these letters, that's just a slap in the face, you Something needs to be worked out, and you need to be able to work with them, you can't do this to our kids at the school. And then the coaching, the substituting, the timekeepers, scorekeepers, no money? And that just goes back to, like, the bus issue Ms. Hardy had brought up, as far as having no money, you know? These stipends that get put in the paper, $5,000 per administrator, right here. Why? To attend these meetings? What about our teachers that have done great for our students? How are they getting recognized? That's something that needs to be looked at. I mean, is this why our children aren't getting tribal clothing? Is this why our athletes take sack lunches to their away games? And it's the same old thing? You see the coaches walking in with a box of sack lunches, and they're walking out with the same box. Field, it's just a waste. And the last item I want to bring up is the bullying, you know? We need to keep that, uh, going, non-tolerance, it's happening in all the schools, you know? They had, it, it's amazing how, uh, this Gallup Bengal Tournament happened over the weekend. There was a lot of stuff being heard out there about these tickets, about only Miami Mira students going on this trip. Then it's, it's on the agenda, and it says no costs. Why is it on there if it's no costs? How are they getting there? I hope it's not a bus. If Navajo Pine couldn't be provided a bus, then I hope they're not going on a bus. And why wasn't the, the other schools looked at, you know? Why was it just Miami Mira? There was a lot of, lot of schools out there. There was a lot of academic athletes out in all these school areas in our district. That should have been something to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda Chichero?
Good evening, board, um, Chappetti, Madam President, Manu Lito. Um, I have a concern that I'm bringing here from the community of Manu Lito Chapter. There has been an issue with the tribal clothing. I have given you guys a packet. Our parents, our elders, our students are concerned about why there's no tribal clothing this year. And I would like to, to show how important it is to have tribal clothing. I also put in my packet the New Mexico unemployment rate. Okay, the national average is 4.9. New Mexico is 6.7. So, in our state of New Mexico, we are higher than the whole United States of America of unemployment rate. And this isn't, this is, this is in our state of New Mexico. This is to our parents, who these students go to Gallup McKinney County School, that they don't have jobs. And tribal clothing is essential for our students, and I don't understand why we don't have tribal clothing this year. I also have another report, um, from, report, child poverty rates highest in New Mexico. We have not only in just poverty, we're also in hunger. And I want to read a quote in this, on the second page, from Amber Wallen, Director of New Mexico Voices for Children, which published, published a 72-page report, said, "Poverty holds back the state's children. We will not make significant gains in educational outcomes, economic well-being, until we make addressing child poverty our top priority." Wallen stated, said in a statement released with the annual ranking. What does this say? That tribal clothing is not a priority? That tribal clothing are students' welfare and well-being? We ranked the highest unemployment rate, poverty rate, hunger. And I have the statistics from the Census Office from 2015. 21.3% ranked a 50% in the state of incomes of a family of four of $23,000. 29.1% ranked children under 18 families whose incomes below poverty level. The race and ethnicity, African-Americans in the state of New Mexico is 21.8, Asian-American is 12.3, Latino is 25.6, Native American 34.6. And tribal clothing is not a priority? There's no jobs, we're in poverty, we don't have, our children are hungry, and we don't want to make it a priority that our children are getting tribal clothing, when economically we are in a social, it's in a recession, we, we're, we're the poorest state in the United States. And I also gave you a picture of the Navajo Tribal Clothing Program. And I don't understand why this is happening. I don't believe it should be happening. And the community, at the chapters, the elders, the parents are wondering, why? Why has this happened? When they know we're the poorest state in the United States? We rank 50, and this hasn't changed in the last four or five years. So what does this mean for our Gallup McKinney County students? What does this mean for them? When parents don't have jobs, when parents are poverty line, when parents don't have food, what does this mean for them? And then we're telling them that it's not important? That it's not a priority? Is that what you're telling us, Gallup McKinney County School District? The superintendent? That's my concern. And another thing, real quick, is that I had, I had presented, I just heard that cut, budget cut. I had presented, and I have given you guys a copy of a resolution from Manu Lito Chapter. Johnson O'Malley returned last year, 237,000. And they have wrote, we did a resolution, and they have been wanting the superintendent to come to the chapter, to explain to the parents, to the community, to the elders, to the parents, to the students, why $237,000 went back last year in Johnson O'Malley funding. And we hear about budget cuts, we hear about there's no transportation, we hear about there's no, there's no money to pay for our coaches. We hear that there's no money. Well, there was money. Why did that money go back? So I would like, and I would ask, and putting it forward to you, because this has gone on void, and this was done back in September, and we have not heard anything. Not only that, Rock Spring Chapters, Casimir Lake, and there's other chapters. So, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, all of the public comments. I just want to say that we don't have to have public comments on the agenda. But for a couple of years now, we have, and we're very thankful to hear, um, the comments from our public and our constituents. So, yeah, thank you for your comments. Board members, we're now moving on to four approval of consent item agendas, 6C, 6D, 6E, 8B, 8H, 8I, and 8J. Any questions or comments on these items?
Madam President?
Yes?
Um, I still wanted to pose that question on the superintendent regarding item B under eight new business.
Thank you, Ms. J, um, Madam President. Um, I spoke to you right before the last board meeting, because the request came in right before then, and we couldn't get it on the agenda. So I talked to you and Mr. Manini since you were the two here early at that meeting. Um, Washington Redskins, as you all approved, helmets for each of the schools, they donated 15 helmets to all-area high schools. It wasn't just Gallup McKinney County Schools, it was also Farmington, Central Consolidated, Chin Lee, Winderock. The same person who was, um, organizing that sent out a first-come, first-served, um, stating that they had 150 tickets to go to the Washington Redskins games. So all the area schools had the opportunity to, to ask for them. Matter of fact, I received a short report, actually a thank you note for the board, um, that the kids had a great time, um, and there's a misprint on here. It wasn't supposed to be 15, it was supposed to be 45 students. Um, they actually took 40 students, seven coaches, um, and the bus driver. Pedro Vista also attended, but just coaches and wives, no students. Uh, Wingate and Chin Lee took approximately 12 athletes each. They were fed, um, toured the area. This Kendra Brown from the Washington Redskins, um, it's the Washington Redskins Originals Foundation, is when the Origins Foundation, um, they've already said they have 80, uh, $60,000 for helmets and also reconditioning of helmets for next year. Um, they're actually going to be coming into the area to sponsor a camp for all-area students, not just Miami Mira, all-area students. They're going to be bringing some coaches, professional athletes and such this summer to do a camp. And they're also working on getting the Cardinals involved to help, um, also branch in, since they're the local, technically the local team. So, so it's something that can be improved and beyond. As you see, it does say no cost to the district. Um, Washington Redskins donated the tickets, the Mills, and the Booster Cub paid for their transportation, so there was no cost to the district. And I will reiterate that all, all schools had the opportunity on the first-come, first-served basis.
And, um, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I mean, um, Madam President, on that same note, Superintendent, so how was that outreach also made to the rural schools itself?
I believe, um, they didn't contact Central Office whatsoever. Um, this, this came to us from an athletic director, so I'm assuming that they contacted each of the athletic directors. Um, I'd have to thank Linda Anderson at Miami Mira High School for being very responsive for her school and, and tackling this right away.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry. I don't like the que, the, the word you use, assumed. I think that, um, if this was brought to other coaches, it shouldn't just be an assumption, because our, you know, you know that I am very, um, I was very verbal when I first became a board member of this, I don't know what you want to call it, favoritism, this unevenness, inequality from the city schools compared to the rural area county schools. I faced it when I was a child and a student, and I know we've talked about it, and I, I don't like assuming. It should have gone out. You should make sure that it went out to all the other athle, all the athletic directors in the district, and not just say, well, I assume it went out. That, that's bothersome to me, because with that assumption, we don't know if it did or not. And a lot of kids missed out if that assumption was not fulfilled in other schools in the rural area, or any schools.
Madam President?
Yes?
And, um, Superintendent, as far as the transportation was concerned, you had just mentioned, mentioned that, um, we kind of serviced that through the district. If so, did, um, the Washington Redskins fund the, and foot the bill as far as the transportation is concerned?
No, ma'am, as I just reported, the Booster Club paid, paid the district for the transportation.
Okay, so the Booster Club paid for the trans, okay. Okay.
Madam President?
Yes?
My concern is, you know, we heard that Navajo Pine, um, were told they could attend a, um, a basketball tournament at Santa Fe Indian School, and we're told there was no transportation. Was, is this having to do with, because it seems like it's the same time here, that they took the transportation to Phoenix rather than, um, fulfilling a scheduled basketball game?
Mr. Mitchell, in response to your questions, one, I can't answer. First, I've heard of the Santa Fe game being canceled. Two, it was on Sunday. NMAA doesn't have activities on Sunday, so there wouldn't be a tournament on Sunday, so no. And three, Tohachi-Navajo have an athletic bus, an activities bus, um, so, so they would have their own busing to go. Um, I'm going to say it's not due to inav, inavailability. I've already emailed Jeff Bond to get a response to the claims made during the public comment, so, once I get an answer to that, I can have an answer for you. Until then, I can't.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, sir. Hit him in.
This-
This might have been clarified to the board in a previous meeting, but I'm not clear on it yet. On items, we're looking at all the consent.
Yes.
On items H and I, I'm not clear yet why this is coming to the board. I thought this is a personnel matter that's handled administratively, but there might be something even in the agreement or something that...
No, sir, it's board policy. I don't have the authority to grant this leave. It's you have the authority.
Where is that policy?
I'll bring forth the Personnel Handbook. Board policy.
How does that square with our state law, then? Isn't it not still a personnel matter that's relegated and reserved to the Superintendent? I mean, maybe our policy is out of line.
Madam President, Mr. Hitteman. It is referenced in the board policy according to the law, and so that is an option that the board has to approve leave. This particular policy says over 12 weeks requested, the board approves. Less than 12 weeks, the Superintendent approves. So that's why this is going to the board, because of that policy. Those policies were written by a legal team as a result of research through the state law. So I can provide that to you so you have reference.
Madam President?
Yes.
On that same note, because we do have one from Crown Point area, why wasn't that on the agenda as well? Superintendent, if you could answer that?
She's still within her FMLA leave time that I have the authority to approve. If she goes beyond the FMLA, then I will be bringing it to you. These individuals here have exhausted their FMLA. I've already granted them the time off up until when I'm allowed to. Now they're asking for additional, and that's why we're bringing it forward to you.
And Madam President, Superintendent, so how many days or what's the timeframe for them to request for another emergency leave or leave?
I'm confused on the question you're asking. What period of time? As I mentioned, if it's 12 weeks or more, the board approves. If it's less than 12 weeks, it's the Superintendent. And this is for leave of absence without pay. Typically, those are for medical reasons, or maybe it's educational reasons, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President? I appreciate your answer, and I appreciate you knowing, I thought I went through the policies, I don't remember that one. But I'm still, I think it should be reviewed if that really is squares with state law. I accept what you're saying. I wonder about our policy at that point. Do you know when that was written approximately?
It was about, I'll say approximately seven to eight years ago. I think those policies were reviewed by many districts, or by a specific legal service that provided board policy for many districts in the state. So when you look on the School Board Association website, those policies were created by that legal team, and then each individual district modified that to meet their needs.
There seems to be a contradiction with everything else when it comes that we don't deal with contracts, et cetera, so...
I can understand that. Sometimes the law is not perfect, and there are some contradictions, it appears to be sometimes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I would like to hear, oh, never mind. Yes, a short report from under Agenda Item 8J with Gallup McKinley County, the MOU, and the National Indian Youth Leadership Project, what they will be providing to our district again this year.
If you look back under the item Executive Sun, oh, he's here.
Yeah.
I was going to say, I've got his...
Yeah, I got it too. I just want to, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam President and Superintendent. Thank you for putting our MOU on the agenda and considering us from NOLP. My name is Matt Baker. I'm an experiential educator for National Indian Youth Leadership Project. I work under Matt Call, who's our founder and executive director. We presented in MOU with Theru High School, and basically, it's a funding grant that we got for teen pregnancy prevention. And since we're an experiential, we do a lot of experiential education work within our nonprofit organization, so we do a lot of positive youth development work. So throughout the next half semester, we would like to provide a lot of outdoor activities with the students in Theru, but also keep in mind that we want to also provide some sort of small education on behalf of pregnancy prevention. Basically, a lot in terms of relationship building, like healthy relationships and what that really means. Since we're a positive youth development approach, we really don't get into the plumbing aspect of the whole teaching behind teen pregnancy. So a lot of what we do is we look at it in a more positive way of how we can get youth to be engaged more into the outdoor field and adventure. I don't know if you have any more questions?
So this will be, I see on your outline here, that'll be from January 2017 to June?
Yes, that's correct.
I just want to say with, I've worked with your program before in the past through the Theru Community Center, and I know that a lot of our youth utilize this during our Youth Leadership Council that we have.
Yes.
So thank you very much for offering this within our school. Again, I just wanted to see you and for you to give your report so that everybody else can hear. So thank you very much.
Cool. Did I add something else also? Is that we also appreciate the board for making your suggestions. I know we had a really big project with Chief Manulito Middle School about five years, it was a five-year grant, and we were working in the local schools here. The board really recommended that we try to reach out into the rural schools out in the, so basically, we have done that. We've been really, we're looking at a lot of the rural schools as a priority for all our grant writing purposes. And so thankfully, Theru is one of them that we really wanted to reconnect our programs with and make sure that we continue to solidify our community experience with them. So in the near future, if we ever get any more grant opportunities, we really do look at a lot of the outside schools of Gallup rather than the inside schools. But the last grant that we had was just based on demographics because we needed at least 200 students and within, you know, a whole day of activities. So that's why we picked Chief Manulito Middle School. But we are very thankful for this opportunity and to partner with Gallup McKinley County Schools.
Any other question, board members? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Hitteman?
I would move approval of the consent items that were identified for the agenda.
Motion made by Mr. Hitteman. Roll call, please.
Mr. Manini?
Yes.
Ms. Jeff?
Yes.
Hello, Mr. Mitchell has a question. Mr. Chappetti, you commented that on 8B, that there was not 15 students, that there was actually 40 students and seven chaperones, correct? So eight adults, so 45 students and eight adults.
So should there have been some type of a motion to change those numbers before we voted on this?
Yes, Mr. Hitteman?
I was assuming in my motion that we'd noted the correction, I think it was called a typo, of the number of students and staff. I didn't mean to prove it just with the numbers written if they're not correct.
Okay, I'll go with that, and I mean, as long as that's stated in the minutes, the correct wording on that, yes.
Ms. Manulito?
Thank you. We're now moving to five Study Circle A reports.
Thank you. I'd like to turn this over to Ms. Fraser for recognition.
Madam President, Superintendent Chappetti and board members, we do have some recognitions tonight, and we'd like to start, for those out in our audience patiently waiting here, we'd like to start with our exemplary teachers for the school year, the past school year. They were rated on the New Mexico Teach Rubric that comes from the New Mexico Public Education Department. We actually had 12 recipients fall into that exemplary portion of that. One of them did leave our district this year, and so now we're going to recognize 11. So if we could ask those teachers who are getting awarded here to come and get their award and stay up here so that we can get a photo for the Gallup Independent, we'd appreciate that, and they will come up and shake your hands as well. So we thank you for your support with this. They are featured, eight of them, agreed to be featured in the journey this month, and so we've provided each of you with a journey so that you could have that. And they too will get not only their certificate, but a journey as well, just in case they didn't get one. So let's start off with a Reima High School vocational education teacher for many, many years. He now sits as the Reima High School principal. I'd like to recognize Mr. Lanny Ray. Next, we have a fifth grade elementary teacher from Lincoln Elementary, who also serves as their instructional support coach. Welcome Felicia Sam. Also a Gallup graduate. We're very proud of that. Coming to us from Miyamira High School, a math teacher, we'd like to welcome Irene Fuller. From Gallup High School, also a math teacher and Gallupian, Gallup High School graduate, welcome Carla Zeca. From Miyamira High School, another math teacher, I'd like to recognize Yulia Nichols. And a fifth grade teacher from Indian Hills Elementary, Mr. Peter Ippe. Also like to call up a kindergarten teacher from Theru Elementary, Wendy Sturris. Our other three recipients, Maria Diaz from Indian Hills Elementary, we'd like to recognize her. She's a first grade teacher. We'd also like to recognize Lorraine Platero, who's a kindergarten teacher at Crown Point Elementary, and a third grade teacher from Tohachi Elementary, Marie Chamberlain. Let's give these teachers a round of applause. Thank you for all your hard work. Next on our list for recognitions is a group of people that helps us out throughout the year. I cannot say enough about our partnership with them. They help us get the news out, they help us with anything we need, and they have especially helped us this year, well, in this past year since I've come on board, with the new teacher orientation. We had over 100 teachers here this past new teacher orientation, and if it were not for the Chamber of Commerce, each of those teachers would have not received a bag and all the goodies and gift certificates and all kinds of discounts throughout the city. It's kind of like a hug to Gallup, and so we would really, really like to recognize the employees of the Chamber of Commerce. First and foremost, Gretchen Herriman, would you come up, please? Gretchen's guilty of doing a wonderful, wonderful job and getting us all that we need. Thank you, Gretchen. Next, we have Cecilia Perez from the Chamber. Come on up. Cecilia was instrumental in getting 60 of our administrators into a training at the University of New Mexico, a leadership training. So thank you for that, Cynthia. Nice work. Now someone who's just now come down from the clouds over the weekend, we'd like to introduce the CEO and Director of the Gallup Chamber of Commerce, Bill Lee, and ask him to share a few words.
Madam President, members of the board, community members, thank you. The Chamber is wholeheartedly behind the education system of our community. It is the future of our community, both the entrepreneurs, the future workforce, and the business leadership that will come from these schools is incredible. I'm fortunate enough to say and proud enough to say that I'm a product of the Gallup McKinley County School System. Board Member Manini chewed on my backside many times in high school, and it was well deserved. But I do want to say thank you. Superintendent Chappetti, Terry Fraser have been wonderful to work with. My team makes everything happen. I go to meetings, they run the chamber. So I would like to again recognize both Gretchen and Cecilia for their hard work and their efforts and endeavors. And we work hard so that we can make sure that the word gets out, as Terry said, and we look forward to continued partnerships. The new teacher orientation is important to us. When we bring these folks to our community, we want to make sure that they stay for a long period of time. So we do everything that we can to do what we can to make sure that they have a positive experience. So thank you.[1785.47][1785.47]
I gotta say, Mr. Manini chewed on me a little bit, too. Madam Chair, Superintendent Chappetti, School Board, that concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
Next, under the superintendent's report, we have the Indian Education Committee Report.
Good evening, Board of Directors, Staff, Guests, Visitors, Superintendent. My name is Monica Yasi. For those who don't know me, I am the JOM President for the Indian Education Committee. Ms. Moffett is printing out my written report, but I will highlight some of the concerns tonight. As soon as she gets them printed out, I'll pass them out. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody who had sent me prayers and sent me a nice card during the time I've been out. I took that time off for a little bit, rested in and back. A lot has happened since I've been away. The first item I'd like to address is that in July, we had a work session with the Superintendent and the administration, and they were supposed to reconvene during our orientation. I wasn't at the orientation, but during our November 10 meeting, I did get a brief update with our regular IEC members and was informed at that meeting that the orientation that was supposed to be brought to us regarding the items that I had reported a while back was not presented at our JOM orientation. And some of those were the New Mexico Meetings Opens Meeting Act, Ms. Javana Hanks was supposed to be there. We had questions because they cited us regarding our KIDI Fund, the OMB Super Circular, especially to those new members that weren't presented. I believe the fundraising was also supposed to be addressed, how we can fundraise or solicit for funds for IEC, because some of our federal funds couldn't pay for some of the parental costs such as if we were to invite parents, food couldn't be brought, or if we wanted to donate, you know, what was legal, what was not legal. A lot of those concerns wasn't presented during the orientation. I don't know if our Superintendent is going to get together again with us. I have not talked to him since I've been away. A lot of more issues and concerns are still being brought up to our meetings. Just to let you know, he is on our agenda every month to present a report if any questions were asked of him at this time. Those ever since I've been away, the only time he was present at the meeting was when he was wanting to present something to do with the audit finding. I still haven't seen any of that, any of anything that was being presented to them, trying to be presented to the Board of, JOM Board. I don't know what's going on with that. We still would like a work session with the Board of Directors. I still would like to have a work session if we can still come together. I know we tried to get that done last week, but due to the weather, we postponed that. I still need your support to see if we can try to work together. We've had a really rocky year in the beginning, and I don't want to go through that again. We got our budget report this last meeting, and I'm still seeing that some of the schools are not spending their money. But I do appreciate all the principals and the staff that are working with Ms. Moffett that we actually almost have a full representation from all the schools, which is good. And also, one of the biggest concerns I keep hearing is the tribal clothing. I don't know why nobody was assigned to at least pick up those forms or send some staff to pick up the forms for their tribal clothing. So this year, I believe, all the schools didn't receive tribal clothing, and that benefits some of our families who are unfortunate. Those clothes mean a lot to those families and those kids, because not everybody's fortunate enough to have, you know, an 8:25 job and so forth. So we try to look out for all our native children of what benefits the programs can I think there was a BIE monitoring that was done, which I was unavailable for, and I think a report you all should have, because that report was given to the Superintendent three weeks ago. So I'm not sure about what the results were on that monitoring report, and that's going to be addressed here by Ms. Chicharillo here in a minute. Otherwise, a lot of the things are just repetitive issues and concerns I have. You know, I really am trying to be, we want to work together. I don't want this year to go by with us returning money again. I really, really want to try to get us to spend this money. This is going to be the third year this money's being allocated to the schools. And again, if this doesn't work, we're going to see if we keep the money here in-house next time, next year. I'm really trying hard to get the schools to spend money without going through all the red tape, and that's why I really need the administration's involvement here to see what we learn here, we can also go back to our rural areas that don't get much assistance here in the district. With that, I'll let Brenda finish up with the report we received. Thank you.
Monica, Board Members want to ask some questions to you first before Brenda does her report.
Madam President?
Yes.
I have a question on educating principals. You say that, you know, the principals are doing well and, you know, trying to get that money spent, but from what I'm hearing, that's not the case. You know, our principals have, and I've heard it from two of the committees that meet with the principals, and the principals are telling these committee members, "We're getting this much money from JOM, and here's a list, let's hurry up and spend it and then get it out of the way." That, to me, that is very improper, and what they're suggesting is going to benefit only a few students. I know what money they do get's not a great deal of money, but still, what money they do get, I think, needs to benefit as many students as it can and not be told by their principal, "Here's a list, hurry up and approve it and let's get this over with. Let's spend this money," just to get it out of the way. I think that's very improper, and that should not be part of their educational or training as to how to spend JOM money.
I agree with you. Board Members, excuse me and excuse me to my non-native friends that are here, but I'm going to speak in Navajo. They're trying to be professional, they're trying to speak on behalf of their children that they're representing. What are we going to say next? They've been patiently requesting for assistance, and it's bothering my heart, it's hurting my heart to a point where we're not listening to our own parents anymore. Board Members, I'm going to request that we make a directive tonight, that this is done, and that we, all the requests that they have on their report, be given to us in a written notice of that these Open Meetings Act guidelines, OMB Circular Training, the KIDI Fund, what's allowed and contribute to the IEC, the federal funds into that's not allowable and allowable for new Board Members, the tribal clothing issues. I want dates of when these trainings will be available in written format by the end of this week. I think enough is enough. We're mid-year, we're ready to start January, and none of this is done. So I would like to request that, and I would like to make it a directive at this time, because I think we've had enough. I think our parents deserve better than this kind of treatment, no matter if it was any club or any sponsor that's happening to them. This is unprofessional and very disrespectful to our parents. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Hittman.
I'll come back to your directive. First of all, I'll say, Monica, it's good to see you back.
Thank you.
Glad you're feeling better. Second, in the same vein, we do need to set a date as soon as possible, I think, for the work session that got postponed with the weather. It gets tricky and, you know, busy during, when you get closer to Christmas season, but I think we ought to find a way to do that as soon as possible. I don't know what as possible means in this case, but, you know, we do need to have that work session. In terms of the directive, Madam President, you know, there's a pattern here, unfortunately. We've heard for a year, these reports from IEC saying, "We've asked for this, we've asked for this," and it just hasn't seemed to come through. So if we need to, I don't know if we need to motion for that, or if you can do that as a request as a Board Member and President, but I think we need something concrete at this point to assure, and I think the concreteness was in terms of you wanting dates by the end of the week projecting. And there is an IEC meeting coming up this Saturday, I believe.
Yesterday.
I don't know. Agenda is prepared for that?
Yes.
If, again, that agenda includes routinely a report from the Superintendent.
Yes.
That can dovetail into that. But I think those requests, we've heard so often, they do need to be honored, not just in a pro forma way, but people need that information. We need to grab a hold of that in terms of providing the information that the committee wants and needs and keep saying they're open to. So if the directive is the way to do that, then whatever it takes, I think we need to get all of our minds together and get that information, whether it's from Superintendent, from the Business Director, I mean, the different elements that were mentioned there. Because this year, we do have a committee that's fuller, has fuller representation than last year for the schools, and that's good, and so we ought to use that opportunity to move things forward.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Jeff.
Before we take that motion, I too have a couple of questions. My first question is, who's behind not getting this together?
The person that we're supposed to consult with, I'm the person that's supposed to be consulting, is with Mr. Chappetti, and I did email him, CC'd my Carmen, and if I can't get my request through Mr. Chappetti, I go through Ms. Carmen Moffett. But Mr. Chappetti is well aware that he's always on our agenda, and he is invited to all our meetings.
And, Madam President, I'd like Mr. Chappetti to respond to some of these concerns that are brought up by the Indian Education. Oh, you're going to put that in writing?
You guys have given me a directive to respond to these by the end of the week.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I will say, I have been to several of the meetings, but for some reason, the bylaws say the certain Saturday of every month, but for some reason, they were happening on Sundays. Haven't been able to make those. Joan and I were here for one of the work sessions that was scheduled, but never materialized. So, and then I will answer these other ones in writing. Some guidance has been given, some of it wasn't with Monica out, and I will be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you, because I just wanted to know what was going on. I appreciate that.
So what that directive made, Madam President, I think we could probably make it a motion that way. It's coming from the entire Board?
There is a motion.
We can't add.
Oh, we can't add it, okay. Okay. Okay, so with that, with the directive coming from the President, I would like a full, a very full report on tribal clothing as to why and who was supposed to pick applications, who didn't pick applications, and reasons.
Mr. Mitchell, I'm going to ask you to give the report. Joan and I both followed up with that office. We're told that their new person was under orientation, that they didn't have anybody there at their agency, and that's why it was dropped on the contact and such of us. And I'm asking you to give the report, because they were also quite upset with talking to me. You also contacted them and know the same information, that they didn't have an employee, they now have an employee, they are going through orientation, and they will be coming to the first Board meeting in January to give an update on their process and how to get it going again.
Okay, with that given, I will follow up with the Navajo Tribal Clothing Program and get a full report.
I'd like to make a comment about that. I work for a school, it's a BIE school, and one of our employees went and attended the orientation in Winderock, and our school got tribal clothing. So I don't see why, I'm getting mixed information here that during the orientation, it was during the spring break, so no employees attended the orientation. That's why the school's not getting tribal clothing.
I know that if this needs to go in a vote, we can put it on the agenda also later on, but I know we have Board Members that have voiced their voices very strongly against this, but I think the majority of the Board is very concerned about this, and we can continue. I want a full report. Still, I want a full report from the Superintendent. I did not ask Mr. Mitchell for the report. I asked the Superintendent for the report and my directive. Mr. Mitchell can continue on and continue to fulfill the report if he feels that's necessary, but that was not my directive when I made it.
Madam President?
Yes.
Monica, is there such a way, or Brenda, is there such a way that we could, I don't know if the deadline had already passed for the tribal clothing, because I am really concerned about this issue. Is there any way that we could backtrack, because there's a lot of finger pointing, and I want to get down to the bottom of this and figure out what is really going on, because those children, they deserve those clothing, they rely on that, and there is a high population, there's a high unemployment, and I think that we need to do something about that.
Through our school, there's our administrative assistants attended the orientation that was for the tribal schools, for the BIE. I am not sure if anybody now, since we're already in the middle of the year, can go back and receive tribal clothing, because right now, at this time, the schools are already receiving their packages for those tribal clothing, so they would get it around this time.
And, Madam President, Monica, can you look into that for us, please?
Yes, I can.
If we need our Board President to also make and follow up on that, because I'd like to see if there's a way that we could address that issue, because, you know, that's through the loophole somewhere, and I think that if we can make a good case, a good solid case on this, I think that they might have an opportunity to go ahead and allow us. So if we can look into that, I would really appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, I'll look into that.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Hittman.
I think that, you know, the confusion of us being told that several attempts have I think that, you know, the confusion of us being told that several attempts have been, were made to the Navajo Nation on tribal clothing, and they had not answered their phone calls, they had not returned phone calls, and we had no information on it, but now we're finding out that they did contact and talk with superintendent and give him that information. Therefore, you know, yes, I was concerned about that and why we weren't getting a response from the Navajo Nation back to our superintendent on what he was trying to address to them or find out information.
Okay, with that, Ms. Chicharella's going to finish.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Hittman.
While we're still talking about the directive, may I ask you to clarify a little bit? What I heard you say, I thought at one point in the directive, was that you wanted the superintendent to indicate or establish some dates by which some of these things would be taken care of in effect.
Oh.
And I just want to be clear, what we're, what the directive is saying should be in writing, or just so it's clear what the directive is really saying and asking for, so we all have the same understanding on that.
Was she? Oh, yes, thank you. The directive that I made is our I E C parent, our parents, have been requesting, which is open up to anybody that wants to attend, has been requesting for the Open Meetings Act guidelines. They want a training on that. They also want a training on the O M B circular. Now that we, let me stop there. Monica just reported that we have almost all schools represented, meaning that we have new parents that are needing this training also. So have that in mind also, that we're going to be dealing with new parents that have never, don't even know how our application process works, so, but our Open Meetings Act training, O M B super circular training, what is approved and not approved. They tried to start a Kiddy Fund, but they were told they're not allowed to do that, so they need a reason why they can't do that, and what is allowed to contribute among the I E C. What are the rules on that of donations? And what is needed to ask for contribution for I E C parents when federal funds cannot pay for the costs, into costs unlawful? So I think that one is just saying what can, if federal funds won't let them pay for, like, their meals, how can they raise money so they can pitch in for those meals and correct, that's just an example, but, okay. Report on why native, then the tribal clothing issue. I think we kind of stated that. But I would like to have those trainings and the dates of when those trainings will take place. And I know, Mr. Hittman, you said the work session, so that would probably be added on, but I think. That's my directive.
So you're wanting dates for those trainings covering these items that were mentioned in the report, and then you want that information in writing in terms of when those dates will be and so on?
But I think, I think a report on why the tribal clothing is not getting to our kids. As you all know, I work in, I work with the community center. I beg, I, I beg, I request for Action Seven News jackets all the time. It bothers me that our children, as cold as it is now, in the mornings and the evenings, that they don't have jackets. I've donated jackets to some kindergarten students, to kids that are just walking home from school that need jackets, and even some elders that need jackets. Jackets is a big thing right now, and we need those kids to be in school, because the next thing we're going to hear is our kids are not in school because they're sick and our attendance rate are down. So we need to do what we can to help our kids, and just because people don't want tribal clothing, doesn't mean that we can't, we make our children sacrifice and be cold at night, or walking home, or in the morning waiting for the bus. That's just mean. Put your personal business aside and help our children. Brenda, sorry.
Good evening, board. I just wanted to make a comment on the tribal clothing. I was, I actually became aware of it back in August, the end of August of 2016. Reason why was I was at a chapter meeting at Manulito, and the parents and the elders were saying, "How come we don't have our tribal clothing slips?" And I said, "Usually the schools are good about it. They give it at the end of August. You have to turn it in right when school starts. They give you two weeks to turn it in." I said, "You guys should have already had your forms." And they said, "Well, we don't have our forms. The kids don't have any. We called the school." And then they were getting mixed messages, "There's no funding." So I personally went to Windaroc in the end of August, and I talked with Ms. Laughing, and she told me that they had their orientation every year around March and April, and they had it during spring break. She said, "This is no ordinary, this is every year, they have it around the same time." She said that the schools send their health assistant to these orientations. So I said, "Why isn't there somebody that represents the 35 schools of Gallup-McKinley County as come as one representative if our health assistants are on spring break?" And she said, "Well, we did call Ms. White, and she said she was in B here. She didn't show up." I said, "Okay." She said she called, she left messages, but we don't have anything. We checked our message, we checked our recording, we don't have anything. So I said, "We did ask to have somebody come represent Gallup-McKinley County School, the 35 schools." The only thing she told me at that time was David Skeet's cape, but she said, "I don't know if they didn't show up, they didn't get their slips, because they only give out those tribal clothing slips at the orientation." I talked with my school at Turpin Elementary. They're on a waiting list. They had to submit paperwork to Windaroc office, and there, and from tribal clothing, they fund 500 schools. So our schools are at the end of 500 schools. So, you know, that just tells you how much this need is. And so my school is at the back of 500 schools. And she says, "Well, it's, whether there's funding, if there's not, but, you know, you can be on a waiting list." But to me, it was like, I have to go back as a community representative, and I have to explain that to the parents and tell the people, and then they always ask, "How come we don't have Gallup-McKinley County School here? How come the superintendent's not here to tell us these things? Why isn't we get these things? Why don't they inform us? There's no communication." And that is what I get from the communities, our elders, our chapter officials, our parents, and now this, you know, I don't want to go to the school and tell the students, "You don't have any, you're not going to get any tribal clothing." You know, that's heartbreaking. And to me, I think this is the first time this has ever happened, but I don't think it should ever happen again. And just my comment.
Brenda, can you please let me know when your next chapter meetings are in those areas?
Okay, I will. So we had a meeting, I'm going to go to the, you guys, I handed out copies of the B I E monitoring report that they did in July 19, 2016. The reason why I brought this up to you here is because we had a meeting in August at I E C, and we had two board members that were there, and they were not ever aware that B I E had came to Gallup-McKinley County School to do a monitoring on the Johnson-O'Malley funding. And I was astounded, because I was wondering why our school board members were not aware of that. So I felt that as I'm an I E C, I'm also a parent, I felt that the school boards should be aware, because I did not want to wait too much down the road and you guys were not aware of it, or if when you guys came to our next meeting and you guys were not aware of it. So this is the reason why I brought this report to you, and you have the, I wanted to, well, my concern was on, as you can see, the findings on, from what B I A comment. Let's see, where is that? Let's see, there is a.
Page three.
Page three?
Starts on two. E I A comment?
Yeah, on administration. I wanted to look at the comment on that, because. Because it did, I mean, we keep hearing that J O M doesn't get audited, there haven't been audited, but Navajo Nation, J O M does their own audit. They don't get, I don't know why they don't give the reports, but they do. But I also wanted to put the recommendation that as a concern of mine's on page four with the B I A comment, this is for last year. Gallup-McKinley County School did not have agendas and sign-in sheets for I E C meetings held, but did not show overall growth. Data was not shared to indicate the number of meetings each I E C member attended and J O M coordinator. There is no record of sign-in sheets, flyers, agendas from schools and chapters regarding the J O M program. I E C evaluation of schools were not shared or available for viewing. My concern is, is that we're missing, we're missing documents. When Ms. Johnson was our former coordinator, from June of 2015 to December, we have no documents. We have no sign-in sheets. We don't have no documents. We have no records. So this is a big concern, and I feel that, I don't know where those records went, but we don't have our records. That's one thing that the B I A thing does on, was that G N Cs need to develop a record-keeping system of the 35 schools, subcommittee, sign-in sheets, agendas, and minutes. Develop a spreadsheet that shows the attendance of members for the school year. You know, we're going to be doing another audit, and then that's going to be a finding. But it's not the I E C, it's administration. So I just wanted to make that, that has been a very concern of mine's, because I have been trying to retrieve documents, and I kept finding, when Ms. Moffett came in in June, she was like, "There's no documents from June 2015 to December 2015." So I don't know where the documents are, and that's concerning. As another thing is that I, and you can see that every component, we don't have any documentation. I don't understand why, and it was really, I was at this, I was at this monitoring meeting, and it was embarrassing, that B I A came in to do a monitoring, because all the articles in the Gallup Independent, because they came, because Gallup Independent wrote all these articles that were only one-sided of the truth, and there was no documentation. And then, and then I E C, we're being exploited in the newspaper that we're the ones that are not in compliance, when administration doesn't have any documents, and that's not our doing. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Also, I wanted to, so you can see that on the other components. If you look on component two, three, four, five, six, records management, the one that did the monitoring, Mr. Voice, she put us on corrective action, and she wanted all 35 schools to have a binder with Johnson-O'Malley funding. Anytime that the schools used Johnson-O'Malley funding to do, like, pageants, they wanted to show how that the funds are being used, the data to show that there's a growth, to show that these fundings are meeting the goals. So I feel that, I feel that that should be one of the priorities for the district with the Johnson-O'Malley funding. Another thing is that, so I am glad that the B I E came in and did a monitoring report. As for the corrective action, you know, those are the, I mean, we still need to work on that, but I just wanted to make that and bring that to your attention. I wanted to give maybe some time to Bobby to say a comment on tribal clothing.
With that, I would like to, I guess, add to Priscilla's directive, I would like to add to the directive for documentation on all that's missing from the June 2015 through December 2015. The documents that they're needing and wanting, I would like to have something produced, whether there is or not, for, to clarify if there's documents or if there's no documents.
Madam President. Mrs. Jeff. This is really disappointing. As I'm reading this monitoring, it really gives the J O M a bad, a black eye. One concern and one question that I have is, I'd like to have a copy. What is the J O M? What is their job title? What is it, what is it entitled as far as, you know, the responsibility and so forth? Because if we're seeing a monitor and audit like this, I'm so afraid that we might not get funding for next year because of lack of documentation. And so by reviewing this and seeing this, and with what B I A came up with, you know, the federal government's pretty, it's pretty hard. And I know we have to go by guidelines, you know, when it comes to a lot of the, you know, protocols that they have set in place. And so, you know, and looking at the salary for $75,000, that's federal funded, and as a state legislator, that is the Hatch Act. And so by reviewing this, it's really, you know, I'm very, I'm very upset. We talk about our children. You go out there and you make these speeches, campaign speeches, and you talk about how you want to help. What are you talking about when you say things like that? When we have something like this, it's very disappointing. You're misinforming the people. You're misrepresenting the people. And so I'm really, you know, I'm really upset to see this. And I think that we need to, again, with this motion, with this, what we're asking through our board president, I also would like a breakdown by, you know, next week as well, because with the board vice president saying, "We're the documentation." It's obvious that there's no documentation. And so I'd like to get that request made, and then I also would like Ms. Paletto-White to also give us some kind of response, because this is not good. This is about our Native American students. This is about, shame on us. Look at all these that are in here. There's no documentation. And so I have to look upon you, because you're Native American just as much as we are up here, some of us. And so that's a huge responsibility. And so I'm really disappointed and I'm angry. So thank you, Madam President.
Excuse me, Madam President.
Mr. Hittman.
When one goes through this.
When one goes through this report, I'll call it, and it gives recommendations, findings and recommendations on each component and in many cases, it says that we didn't have evidence, meaning documentation, records, show what was done, even if it might have been done, that, that, the record's not there or the record-keeping system is not adequate. That's a bad report. The good part of it is it's fairly concrete in some ways in terms of what needs to be addressed, that, you know, it's component by component. But I want to note that at the very end, the very last paragraph says that a corrective action plan for each of the goals and objectives for Gallup McKinley County Schools will need to be developed and submitted for review by December 2nd, 2016. That was Friday. Now this is part of a letter to President Russell Begay. In other words, it's not a letter that was directed, as far as what's on paper, to the IEC or to the, uh, school superintendent or to the school board. It's to the President of Navajo Nation as having ultimate oversight over Navajo Nation Johnson O'Malley programs. So I, I don't know, uh, what, what the timing of communication or the steps have been in terms of, of whether, whether, I guess I have one question for Mr. Chappetti, whether he has seen this before and whether there's been communication to and from Navajo Nation Johnson O'Malley either as a channel or from the president's office. Because it's saying we should have had this thing ready by Friday, but I don't know when, when this word is getting, getting distributed or, I mean, getting passed on uh, in terms of working on it. But clearly it points the direction in terms of a, a, a much more comprehensive and thorough record-keeping system and documentation system for each of the components. And some of these, to me, should have been in place automatically be, like when it mentions the, um, the culturally relevant research strategies and activities. Our district should be doing that already anyway. When it mentions the net content standards, we've already been committed to that for several years, achieving those. But I don't know, you know, the, the, the status of this in terms of this information getting through to the district since it went to the tribe. So let me go back to my question to Superintendent Mr. Chappetti.
I will include...
Has this been received prior to, to now or what's the status of this letter?
Ms. Moffett was at the meeting, um, along with the administration and, and heard the information firsthand. I did get the letter November seventeenth. Ms. Moffett has been working on it. It's from my understanding, um, Ms. White has been keeping me updated that we asked for a short extension, um, mainly on the documentation of the lesson plans and such, everything else. It was going pretty much according to plan from my understanding.
Board members, I would like to make a clarification and I would like to also request, um, again, in writing, because I'm sick and tired of the verbal and what I wanted in writing. We were told, um, that Mrs. Johnson, when she was the coordinator or director to the, to the Johnson O'Malley program last year, when all these documents are missing, that her salary was gonna get paid through, by the district. I want to know where her salary came out of and what was, um, operational, um, funds? And also what happened to the money that was set aside for her salary to be paid out of Johnson O'Malley funds? What happened to that seventy-five thousand that was supposed to be paid? And that, that's my question because I don't, we, we need a clear indication of what that money went for and how that was spent. Is it included also in the two thousand, two hundred and something thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand that we had to give back to the Navajo Nation um, last year due to two coordinators that were not able to assist our Indian education program at that time? And I also like to say thank you, Ms. Moffett, for clearing up and cleaning up somebody else's mess that is happening and with this, these funds.
Now that we have about twelve things, it seems like, on this directive. Can I please have it in writing? I think Mr. Hittman had a very good idea on that and that way it's not coming down to missing something or misinterpretation of something.
Um, Madam President. Mrs. Jeff. Um, well, when I looked at this, um, this monitoring or this audit here, you look at page six and the second, you know, the second item on there is, is administration, it says to support JOM coordinator's salary. So that was where I was assuming that, so that is just more or less the mileage and, and all of that that's set aside. Is that correct?
Miss, Miss Jeff, in, in representative to that, into the application, um, the full amount of her salary was not, um, the Department of Dine Education, Navajo Tribe Johnson O'Malley Program will not pay the full FTE, one hundred percent. So it was broken down differently and I will provide in writing how the salaries were paid and where the money is.
Yes, I, I'd like to get a copy of that, you know, because, you know, um, it's just, to begin with, this, you know, um, this should have never, you know, it, it, this should have never occurred. I know that we have somebody from the Gallup Independent here and I think that, um, we've really gotten hit as school board members and gotten the blame for a lot of items. You know, especially with the JOM money, get, um, the funding going back to the tribe as far as, you know, all these other, um, audits that, that we're looking at with this, um, monitoring. And so, you know, and I, I think that, um, the answers are all here because there's all these missing documents. And that's not part of our job as a school board member or school board members. Um, and that's not really, um, our responsibility, but to make sure that these fundings are being expended is, um, is a concern. And so when something like this comes up, you know, we, we need to be prepared because we need to get, um, individuals that are qualified, that know what they're doing to ensure that this money is being expended. And so now they're, you know, it is, it is a, like I said, it's, it's a huge concern. So thank you.
I, I just wanted to, um, know, these were the concerns that IEC brought up last year. One thing that I kept, kept on bringing up was the issue was why there was no Navajo Nation reimbursement. And every time we had budget meetings, even when Ms. Johnson was there, we kept saying, "We don't see any, you know, there's nothing coming out of your salary. How are you, are you even getting paid?" Nothing was even said and we kept saying, "We don't see any reimbursements from the Navajo Nation. Have you processed any?" And from, from my understanding was that for nine months, there was no Navajo Nation reimbursement. All of that was done in June of 2015.
And then, Madam President, I also want to make a clarification...
I mean, I'm sorry, June 2016, I'm sorry. That's when all, all those Navajo Nation reimbursements were done in June. And I, and I, as an IEC member, I kept saying, "Why are these reimbursements being done? They should be done monthly." And, and in the subcontract agreement with Navajo Nation, they're supposed to be due the tenth of every month. And I kept, we, as IEC members, we kept voicing our concerns to the, to the administration. And administration, they just, it, it just went deaf ears. So this is what come out of it, but I just wanted to make, to note that and for you to be aware of that so that we're not being, as IEC, that we're the one that mismanage and we didn't do it properly. And we kept asking the coordinators, "How come these things are not being processed? Why isn't these things being processed?" You know, we, as, as parents, because these are the kids' money. We didn't want to see that money going back. And as for me, I speak for the children. I'm, I'm here for the kids. I'm not here for South Gainer. We always say that. We are the parents, we are the voices for the kids. That's why we're here and that's why we do what we do. It's not, it's not, we, we want to benefit our children, all the students, Gallup McKinley County School. And, and, and our, as parents, we're, nobody's listening.
Madam, Madam President.
Yes.
Um, thank you for that clarification and also the clarification from my colleagues here because it is about the children. It is about our Native American students, especially with this funding. And I just want to make that clear and I also want to, um, also say that this has nothing to do with politics. This is not getting back at anybody. This is just making clarification that, you know, um, with the Gallup Independent putting out there that, you know, it's, um, attacking a certain individual. It has nothing to do with that. This has, this is a huge issue that we're dealing with coming from JOM because it's a lot of funding. And this is funding that, um, could, that, that should be used for our Native American students. And so I want to make sure I, you know, I, I clarify that. So thank you. There's one thing that I would like to add to board members. You know, our superintendent requested that we put this in writing, um, which I'm sure that we can do and provide it to him. But, you know, we do have his administration here. All of them are here listening to what's going on. And I'm hoping that they are going to assist our superintendent um, because they're all have their laptops on. They're all working on their laptops, they're listening, plus it's being recorded. So I'm sure that there, the answers to our questions will be answered by his administration to be assisting him also due to the fact that, you know, there are, they are on the payroll still apparently. And that needs to be some assistance, that needs to be provided to the superintendent. So I'm pretty sure that these questions that we have will be a team effort in answering our questions.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Hittman.
Thank you. I'd like to reflect on another element here in our operation. The, uh, there's a, there's kind of a, I don't know what word to use. I was gonna say paradox, that's not what I'm looking for. We have a unique situation in my living experience. Comes to that we have a direct link between the Indian Ed Parent Committee and the board in terms of getting direct reports from the IEC. We get to have direct discussion, like this evening on, on whatever is up. And that should be good. You know, that's a link, what I'm saying is, other school districts that I know of, for the most part, do not have that. At the same time, the backside of that, or I mean, the problem side of that is, that seems to then replace reports from our Indian Ed Directors and Coordinators. So that we have here a memo that was stamped October 12th. We're told that was received administratively here November 17th and now it's December. We should have heard about this, not from the IEC necessarily, but from our JOM coordinator. I think we need to review that. I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm, I just think we need to consider how we close these, these gaps in a sense. Maybe during the work session, talk about that. Maybe administration can review that for some recommendations. But it seems ideally we'd have both and. And we end up having one and then we don't have the other. Most districts, to me, the Indian Ed program reports come from the court administrator, through the administrative channels. Uh, because we're told that, that, um, you know, the JOM Director, Ms. Moffett, has been working on this, but we haven't heard that. Now we had to hear it from the IEC when, again, we keep thinking administration should be keeping us abreast of these things. So I think we need to review that mechanism, not to cut out our, the, the benefit and the uniqueness of having direct link with IEC and then with the board. But that shouldn't replace full reports also from the two coordinator-director positions, however that may be done. But I just think that's, sometimes that's affecting how we're communicating and, and it, it leaves some, some gaps at times. And then the IEC feels concerned and burdened because, I mean, they're doing administrative duties, which, in a sense, which they shouldn't have to be doing. So I think, I just think that needs a review in our, in how we're conducting these things at some point here.
Um, Madam, Madam President.
Yes, Ms. Jeff.
So, okay, well, now that that, that has been brought up, I, I'd like to ask, um, Ms. Moffett, were you directed to take with this, um, audit or this monitoring, were, um, were you told to go ahead and, um, provide the findings or documentations?
There's a JOM, go ahead.
Yeah, Ms. Moffett. Because, um, with what, um, Mr. Hittman brought up about JOM, since you're the coordinator or in that department, I guess?
Madam President, board members, Mr. Chappetti. Um, you will see, of course, you notice that it was stamped on the October 12th that the Navajo Nation received it. They had it in their hands. We did not receive it until November 17th. That's when I forwarded the report to Mr. Chappetti and Paletto White. Um, that was on Thursday, November 17th. At that point, immediately I requested a meeting with the Navajo Nation, a face-to-face meeting because they wanted me to respond by just sending me the report via email. Well, I need to meet with them to, let's sit down and let's go over the report with me. Like, give me an opportunity for me to ask questions for clarification so that I understand what you're asking of Gallup McKinley County Schools. And I'm assuming since I'm the JOM Director that it would be in my hands to respond to this report. So I met with them on November 21st. On November 21st, it was on a Monday, it was a week of Thanksgiving. They were giving me until November 30th to have everything because, uh, it was due to them on December 2nd. They needed a few days to review it. When I learned that I had to gather lesson plans from last school year to reflect the supplies that were being purchased from last school year and that I had to contact all thirty-five schools during a week when school was off and principals were out, I about dropped. I asked them, "Please, can you please ask the BIA, contact them and ask them if we can get an extension?" Because by the time when BIA came to Gallup McKinley County Schools, to the time the Navajo Nation received the report, that was three months. So wouldn't it be fair that from the time that the Navajo Nation received the report, that they would get a reasonable time to respond to this report? So they listened, they contacted BIA. BIA said, "Yes, as long as we get something in writing from Gallup McKinley County Schools." During the time that I needed to respond, um, I had to respond, uh, within a short period of time. So I looked and knew, and I knew that pretty much I would be the person responsible for collecting all the disinformation. And I would, would we be working with also under other, other individuals within our central office to gather this, this data? Um, I, um, kind of paced myself and look, oh, how much time do I think is reasonable? With, I'm still working on Certificates of Indian Making the Count, which is another audit I'm gonna be getting within a couple of weeks. Um, we're having, um, schools ordering many of their supplies and requisitions. So I'm looking at my time and I'm only one person. I don't have a secretary. I have a person who assists me that's supervised by another administrator and we share the secretary. So I'm just one person in this very complex and unique program. So I worked with the Navajo Nation and gave reply to them via letter and I said, "At least here's a reasonable time that I need." Twenty working school days. Not working days, but school days. So that I have enough time to contact principals, to get the lesson plans, to respond, to give them clarification, whatever it may be. Right now, I'm getting responses from schools. I don't think the timing is, is a concern because schools are responding with, within, you know, with, with lesson plans. They're coming in, they're coming in. I allowed my time, a little cushion, a little timeframe, a little window to go back to the schools if I'm not getting lesson plans, to touch back with them and find out which schools I'm still missing. I requested information from Mr. Chappetti, which he has sent to me, which is data on Native American student achievement, information that he has shared with the board. I felt, wow, I need this information for the report and so forth. So I think this information's gonna come together. If I run into a situation on my deadline that I set and agree with Navajo Nation and I feel that I need more time for X, Y, and Z, all I have to do is contact the Navajo Nation. You know, share the information. My supervisor said, "You know, I set this deadline what I think would be reasonable based on what my demands that I have, but I'm going to extend another deadline to see if I can work with them." I'm working right now to try to meet that deadline. I think we're coming along pretty well. Uh, yes, there's a lot of information that needs to be provided. It's coming along and, you know, all, I've been telling to principals, "Find what you can." They're missing lesson plans from last school year too. Some of the schools are having challenges that they have no lesson plans from teachers from last year. If we cannot find a lesson plan based on your information, what you knew from last year, how were the funds used? How were the items used, the supplies and materials? You know, what can you justify, you know, a, a summary of how... You know, what can you justify, you know, a summary of how you know, how you witnessed the items being used if there are no lesson plans? And all we can do is try our best in collecting all this information. And so that's the current situation at this moment. And regards to the comment, Mr. Hideman, if I may respond. The IEC, Indian Education, we had this conversation yesterday. I didn't want to step toes, I felt that it was, the communication needed to come from the superintendent on this report. I shared the report, I would assume that he's the key to your communication, I didn't want to step toes. But the Indian Education felt that you needed to know from them. So I just wanted to get that clear, that I'm aware of that, and I know my role, but I was just cautioned, I was afraid not to step his toes and jump in, you know, and of course, I, I see, wanted to do that, that's what they wanted to do. So I'm glad that we were given the opportunity to talk about this. Any other questions, and did I answer your question?
Yes, you fully answered my question, and I commend you for cleaning up this mess. It is a huge mess, it's a huge task, and just very unfortunate. And Madam President, I also would like to see through you and maybe Mr. Superintendent Chappetti, to get this monitor, this audit, sent to PED. I really want them to get a copy of this. Thank you.
I just wanted to note on what Ms. Moffett said. As an Officer of IEC, I felt that, because we had discussed it at a meeting, we had a meeting Sunday with the IEC, we had a budget meeting, and we had brought this issue up. And I said, you know what? In August of 2016, we had two School Board Members, and they were not aware of the BIE monitoring. They were not, they came to our meeting and were surprised. And they were like, we haven't received anything. And so we felt, as parents, that there's no communication. So I took it upon myself to say, okay, I will go ahead and do this report. I feel that this is the only way that the School Board can get this message. So, and I want to commend Ms. Moffett, she's doing a lot, she's been great. She's been getting our paperwork in, she's very helpful, she responds back quickly. I mean, from what, last year to now, I'm very grateful that we have her. And she does a lot, she does a lot of work, and I just want you to know that. And I'm thankful that she's our Coordinator, and that she's helping us, because now we can, we can go on and move forward, and for our children, and that's all we really want.
Madam President?
Yes.
Yes. Who authorized this? Do you know? Who authorized this monitoring, or who authorized?
The BIE and Navajo Nation JOM selected us for this review. And I will say, this is the first time our district has been reviewed like this. Even the JOM personnel at the meeting, if you would have attended the meeting, even the JOM people from DODI were surprised at what they were asking for, and said, we've never had to keep this before. And it's not a one-year thing. This is not last year, this is, this is six, eight, 10 years that we have never kept lesson plans that show how you're using the material that was purchased, and items like that. This is, this is something that, when they brought it to us, we were like, have we ever kept this information? And we hadn't. This doesn't go back to the last year, this goes back to multiple years before. So it was an eye awakening for our district and even some of the DODI JOM staffs. So we did make a commitment to show that we would start keeping that documentation and...
I just want to comment on that. When Mrs. DeBois came to the monitoring, she said it was a director from Washington, DC, from the JOM Office, Mrs. Davis. So that's, I just want to clarify that.
And Madam President, so has there, just like what this superintendent asked, was there other audits? Why was this a specific one that they wanted to do?
Because they saw February, was it February 2016, Gallup Independent put a front-page article, JOM IEC, basusing funds. They saw that article in the paper. So that, right there, drew a red flag, and all the other articles in the paper that they saw online and that they got. So that was a very big concern. So this came actually from Washington, DC.
Madam President, I hope that you can also give a copy to the Gallup Independent, so that they can also take a look at this. Thank you.
Madam President, I just want to comment on an eye-opener here. You know, this should not even be an eye-opener. We've asked several times for the curriculum, for the progress, for, you know, things that were going on with the Indian Education. And as far as lesson plans. And we were always told that they have to follow a lesson plan, there is a plan. So I don't see, I can't understand why we're saying that it's an eye-opener now. When we were told, meeting after meeting, that, yes, we have lesson plans, they're following a lesson plan, we have curriculum, we're following Navajo Nation guidelines.
Mr. Mitchell, that's not what they're asking. They're specifically asking the materials that were purchased through these funds, how are they being used in the schools, and show us. You were a member of the IEC, what, six, eight years ago? Or so you were President of the IEC before, and that was never asked before and never had the records kept. So that is something that was never, ever done. I don't care who the JOM Coordinator was, that was not done. And then when they asked us to, we looked at them like, what? And Carmen has done a good job working with the principals and the Zone Directors. The Zone Directors have been going to their schools, contacting them, saying, hey, let's pull this material. It's been a very good joint effort to get these materials in, so she can submit the report. She's asked me for data. I was even out of town at the time, I was in Santa Fe, trying to get the data back to her in a timely fashion, because I know she was in a crunch. It's been a joint effort, but this is not items that have been kept in the past. This isn't something that we've been doing great for 20 years, and oh my God, last year we dropped. No, this is something that has never been asked for before. And the lady did give us very good ideas to keep track, the notebook at each school, this and that, that Carmen was taking notes on last year, to try implementing this year. So...
Madam President, with that, you know, I think that even the lesson plan should include materials used. So for us not to know for the past 10 years or whatever, I mean, we should not have to be told that we need to document materials that are used in the lesson plan and that are bought by a JOM. It should be automatic. I mean, we shouldn't, like our superintendent just said, we were never told. We shouldn't have to be told to have to provide things like that. It should be automatically done.
Madam President, on that same note, I think that the other School Board Members are no longer here, and so they can't defend themselves or, you know, what really occurred back then, because I don't want to talk about 20 years or 10 years ago, this has already taken place now, and I think that we just need to deal with it now. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
If you're willing, I'd like to recognize Mr. Martin, who's been patiently waiting to make a comment.
Mrs. Martin, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Yeah, Madam President, Board, I'm making a special request as a very active and involved parent, not only with the Board, but also with IEC, to go ahead and address the topic of tribal clothing that came up earlier. So with your permission, I'd like to bring up a meeting, a School Board meeting, that happened here about a year and a half ago. At that time, Mr. Jeff and Mr. Hideman, I don't believe you two were Board Members then. But the topic of tribal clothing came up then. And during that meeting, let me start with this. Situations like this, what happened with this lack of tribal clothing going on right now, starts with leadership. And I'm going to point out that this is a bad case of leadership. And that leadership came down to one particular School Board Member, who in that meeting, very adamantly and very aggressively stood up and said, I do not want tribal clothing given out at the schools, these Gallup McKinley County Schools. He says, why don't you take it somewhere else? Why don't you take it to the chapter houses? Why don't you have, do it somewhere else, off the school grounds? And those of you that were here, remember, Mr. Manini was very, very offended, so to speak, that his grandchild and the other non-Native students were not getting these tribal clothing. At that point, I was very offended, I was very angered, that a leader like you are supposed to be, would come up with a comment like that. It's no wonder why we're in this predicament we are in today with the tribal clothing. I'm saying it started with you. Some kind of action should have been taken at that point, when that was brought up. And as a parent, I had hoped that the Superintendent would have addressed that and taken care of it. I'm not sure why it was forgotten about until we get to this point today where none of our students are going to be getting that tribal clothing. And it is a big need. Granted, not all students need it, but there is a huge need for the poverty-stricken natives in our communities. And there are a lot of. Perhaps you don't see them, Mr. Manini, but they're out there, in every school here, 35 schools that are affected by this. So again, I just wanted to make that clarification. I think this certain issue could have been avoided if this was not brought up in that manner. Thank you.
Mr. Martin? I do not oppose that issue. I am all for the Navajo clothing. It was how it was distributed was my point in the comment.
Yes, sir, but you also did not help come up with any solutions to further that. And if you go back and look at the records, it does not say you disputed how they were distributed, it said how you were offended that they were being in the schools. Thank you.
I just want to say, I think we've entered into some territory which we've been in for a long time, and we need to keep working at it. I think we need to get the work session going, and I think we need some of the specific things that have been requested in the directive. I don't think there's any particular other action, perhaps at this point, in terms of this report, other than we need to keep it in mind as more than just a report. I mean, it's something, it really needs to guide not only the IEC and the Administration, but the Board as well, to see. Because some of the stuff in here, when it says, okay, we've got materials in the budget, we purchased materials, but now the BIA, BIE, I'm still using BIA, the Bourbonian Education is saying, although it came out of the blue and sort of caught us by surprise, perhaps, I can accept that. But they are, they do have a valid point, in the sense of saying, okay, we want to know, how are these materials used? And are they helping, are they improving the education of the kids by having these culturally relevant materials? And that's a fair question. That's a good question. So if that can get us on track better, in terms of saying, look, we're buying these, you know, Indian-related books, but we're just sticking them in the classroom or in the library, and they're sitting there, so we fill their, we fill our JOM budget thing, but they should be having some impact. And how do we tell that? We should, I mean, it's telling us, pay attention and use them in a way that is productive. And if it gets us doing that better, then great. Because it's easy to spend the money sometimes and not see whether it's really producing what we're after.
Mr. Martin, I think I would like to kind of answer, and I think it's some of our fault, too, Board Members that have been here. I think we rely and we trust and believe in what we're told by our Administration, that this will, that they will follow through, or they will provide, or they would give us these things. And we let it go, thinking that, okay, there's a concern, and they're going to address it. And we don't follow up ourselves. And I think that's where all of us drop the ball, as Board Members. And I think we're learning from that mistake. And like I said, I'm tired of the verbal. I want written now. Because it's gone to a point where we hear, we hear stuff, and it's not the same, we're not on the same page. And I want it in writing. If there's something that being told to us now, I want it in writing. Because it's not right that we're given these, we're assumptions, and our kids are suffering for it. It's not us, it's not them, it's our kids that are suffering. And that's why, I'm sick of it, I'm tired of it. And there's things that we need to start doing now, for the best interest of our children. So I think it's not just Mr. Manini, I think it's all of us, that we dropped the ball on this, and we're going to, we're going to try to correct it ourselves with other things. And I know there's still going to be stuff that's going to slide out from underneath us, or we're not, we're going to oversee and we're going to be told, that was presented to you before, that wasn't the budget. And it's going to continue, I think. And that's what I'm scared of. But I think we're going to try to be more aggressive, we're going to try to be more aware, and I hate to say it, I have a trust issue. And I need to, I need to be aware of that with myself. And I tried, and it keeps biting us back and biting us back. With that, Board Members, I'm going to move on to the Contractors' report.
Ms. Jeff, you asked for vendors and Contractors' report. Ivana readily gave it to me. I have a 313-page report that breaks down every transaction to every vendor for last school year. I haven't printed it, because I don't know exactly what you're looking for. I would rather just print a portion, or electronically cut and paste a portion to give to you. But at this point, with the trust issues, I will send you the whole report. That way, no insinuation that I'm cutting, pasting, deleting, et cetera. So I will forward electronically instead of in written print, because it is a huge document to have to print out, especially if you want five copies. If there's a particular vendor that you have questions about, we would be happy to answer those questions and how they apply.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just as long as we get the whole report, Superintendent. And I think that for accountability transparency, I really think that should really be on the website, too, so that others can view that. Thank you.
I'll ask Ivana on that issue.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Superintendent Chappetti, Members of the audience. Ms. Jeff, we post every time we write accounts payable checks to the website currently, so you can go back and look at any accounts payable distribution that's been issued that is readily available on our website.
Ivana, Madam President, Ivana? So where would an individual look at that?
It's on the Business Services webpage. And it's been posted since it was initially requested. It's multiple months' worth of documentation, but we do issue accounts payable checks almost every week. I'll say almost because of holidays, we sometimes don't issue them because we're closed. But almost every week they're issued, as soon as they're issued, those reports are posted on the website.
And Madam President and Ivana, does this also include, like, bank statements, what's been paid out, and checks?
So bank statements wouldn't be included, but all the vendor payments, including the check number, amount, company paid, all of that information is on there. We would not ever publish our bank statements for security purposes. I do my best to ensure fraud filtering for the district, but I'm very careful on what bank statement information is given.
I guess I should have been more clear about what I was asking, or what I was trying to allude to. Madam President, is, as far as Board Members, can we get copies of that? And you can just black out the account or the... black out the account or the accounting numbers and whatnot?
Absolutely. For any month that you'd like, all bank statements are reconciled monthly. And that includes all 35 Student Activity Fund accounts. Would you like all 35 Student Activity Fund accounts?
Sure.
Not a problem.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And if I'm not mistaken, it does go through every board meeting under current bills? Every one of these transactions do?
Yes.
Go through you all to be approved before they're paid?
Okay. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Hideman.
I appreciate the offer to share all of that 318 pages. I have to say, maybe somebody who's the technician around the technical, but I would actually be afraid to download 318 pages. My home computer right now is suffering from overload and I would think, I'd be afraid of it crashing with trying to do that. Actually, I really would be. If it could be made available here through some computer central services building, I would try to take a look at it. But I, I'm...
I can place it on a tablet.
Okay.
And there's always a computer available in the Business Office. We offer it to our employees as a service. Now that we have our direct deposit slips available online, we make available a computer and a printer to all employees. You, of course, are more than welcome to use that computer.
Okay. Thank you.
Would a flash drive be better for you, Mr. Hideman, too? On a flash drive?
That'd be fine. I think.
Starting with Mr. Manini, we'll go ahead and move on to the Board report. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're correct.
Madam President?
Mr. Hideman.
Just two things. I think that covers all the items that were on the agenda.
Yes.
I want to mention that I do think we need either during the meeting, I think it's an item we don't have to have on an agenda because it can be done outside the meeting. That is projecting a date for another meeting. The other thing I want to mention, I had already hoped to attend the IEC meeting this Saturday, not because of things that came up this evening, just because I haven't been for a while. And so I don't know if others are planning to attend. If we might have a quorum, just a heads-up or a question there because then Joan would need to send out a, one of the routine notices that there might be a quorum at some point during the meeting.
Oh, they left. Board members, I will not be attending the IEC meeting. I did indicate to Ms. Moffett in writing that I will not be there. I have our daughter that's graduating with her Associate's Degree on Saturday, so I will not be in attendance. Yes, thank you.
Well, it'll be my busy day also. My 12-year-old has her first deer hunt this weekend and Daddy's promised to take her. So I will be out of town Saturday and Sunday. Well, it'll be my proxy.
I think our meeting schedule needs to be updated also. I don't know if it's updated on the website. But I know we made changes to March's meeting.
Legal notice has been sent.
Thank you.
Legal notice and updated version is posted.
If you could open your calendars, Board members, so we could set a date for the special meeting. Yes.
I'm looking at December 16th.
That's a bad day for me.
Madam President?
Yes.
I don't know how staff is affected, but I think students get out at the end of that week, maybe a little early. And I don't know quite when any staff may be off, either even in terms of taking leave that they are entitled to with Christmas break. I think if we can do it earlier that week so that staff are available, that might need to be available.
I know that on the 13th and 14th, I know our legislative staff is trying to contact our local legislators to have a meeting, do a work session. I know they're struggling to get dates confirmed, but I know that's the 13th or the 14th. We haven't, they haven't really set a date for us yet. Could I entertain the 12th, Monday? The only other day we'll be available will be the 15th.
Madam President?
Yes.
Back in late October, I changed the, to cancel the 19th. And since then, I have scheduled my December already full. So I will not be able to attend the 12th or the 13th that you might have in mind. I'll be out of town most of December, Madam President.
Madam President, what about this Friday night? Well, that would, no, let me retract that partially.
Seventy-two hours.
If it were a daytime thing, I, again, I don't want to schedule a Friday evening meeting. I'm probably free, but I think that'd be unfair to a lot of people. I'm not sure if the 8th is legal.
I don't think, that's not probably enough, not enough time, Joan?
Yeah.
The lady that takes care of legal notices has her schedule too. She's taking time off, so she's got a schedule for December.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm only open on the 15th. Yeah. On a Thursday.
Okay.
Are you available?
I am.
What time?
Can we set that at 3:00, Madam Chair?
Yes.
And can we have that tagi? We haven't had a meeting at tagi for over, I think, what, over a year, I think.
Could I, Madam President, in response, I support, have expressed support a little bit in the past for having more meetings at the various locations. I would think it'd be better if we were going to add tagi that we do it, like, say, in February or whatever. Because if we're doing this on the 15th and that's about when kids are getting out of school, and the schools do have to prepare some also for those dates they set up, sometimes they kindly provide them food also. But I think it, they might better accommodate us with a little more advance than doing it right before the break. And we still have various dates, both January, both February dates. Those are all in town, so any one of those could be switched. I think March 6th is through, so we're out there. But I'm in favor of doing it there. I'm not sure if it would be better to do it at a different date rather than right here before Christmas break.
Madam Chair?
Hello?
Yes, Ms. Jeff.
The reason why I was saying, in tagi, because election is in February, so I don't want to, I don't know what's going to take place then. So that's the reason why I wanted to have it tagi. And I did have some parents that also wanted to address their concerns. And it's hard for them to come out here because of transportation.
Tagi's fine with me.
I can just say, I am, it's fine with me. Something with somebody.
Consider the weather then.
Where will we go?
The weather.
Weather permit, but we'll keep it at tagi.
Weather permit?
Yeah.
Machine net.
Okay, on the 15th? At what time?
3:00.
3:00.
So...
Mr. Manini?
So, Board members, I would like to request that you send me your agenda items this week, preferably Tuesday and Wednesday again. And I will forward those on to the Superintendent. I would like to request that we have a copy of that agenda, or I have a copy of that agenda, just to make sure that your agenda items are on there. So please, Tuesday or Wednesday, if I could please have your agenda items.
May I ask, Mr. Manini, can, if you can't be physically present, could you take in at least part of the meeting by the phone arrangement on that date?
No, sir. No, sir.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Jeff, let me just say one thing. Mr. Manini, I'm pretty sure your agenda topic will be on our next board meeting. And I think the Board is in favor. I'm sure, I think that was kind of my consensus when we talked about that. Would you mind us putting it on the agenda?
I'd recommend you turn it, put it on the January 5th, the 3rd.
Okay.
So my people that can come.
Okay.
Present my committee.
Okay.
Ma'am?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
So that we won't get, I want to make sure that when the agenda goes out, that those items are on there. If you and Superintendent can make sure that they're on there and that we get a copy of it, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Anything else?
Madam Chair?
We set the dates. I need a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Jeff. Roll call.
Mr. Manini?
Yes.
Mr. Hideman?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.